And now declare the, no, excuse me. And now call the regularly scheduled meeting of the Naterona County Board of County Commissioners for Tuesday, November fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two to order. Madam Clerk, may we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Hendry.
Here.
Commissioner Milne.
Here.
Commissioner Nicolason.
Here.
Commissioner North.
Here.
Chairman Bertullio.
Here. Would you please stand and join me in a pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Chair, entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
I'll second that.
It's been moved by Commissioner Milne, seconded by Commissioner North to approve the consent agenda. Any comments on any of the items on the consent agenda? I would just note that there is, one of the items on here is for Pathfinder, the rebuild of the campground and the boat launch and everything out there. So hopefully we'll see some good progress very quickly on that. With that, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We have no public hearings tonight at this point. Anybody in the audience wishing to address the commission? If you'd please state your name and an address. Tracy?
Tracy Lamont, ninety-eight fifty-five Crimson Dawn Road. So I'm going to be real brief here. I came down today to listen to the presentation during the work session on the new lodge. So I had a couple of things to add, but there's a couple of things that disturb me. When I hear that called the Nordic Lodge, that is the Trail Center Lodge, any way you slice it. When we start making connotations for Nordic for one specific group, we just set up a bloodbath on it. We really do. I think we need to be pushing multipurpose on it. The building's going to be the building, any way you slice it, but I was kind of kidding. You know, if I was Norwegian, I'd be proud as hell if you're going to call it the Nordic Center, but you know, if I looked at the other sides of my ancestor being Scottish, Danish, and Walsh, and what have you, I might feel offended. So you know, somebody could push that to the edge of discrimination if they really wanted to, but I'm not going to make a point out of that. But I think the thing we've got to keep in perspective, that thing's been paid for with tax funds, not coming out of the registrations totally for Nordic skiing, because that's paying for the maintenance on them, but that's been paid for with tax funds generated by everybody in this county that's paid any taxes to speak of at all. So if we could get that connotation of that, I would feel much better. I wouldn't lose any more sleep about it. But that thing's geared for biking, for year-round on it, and those people have learned how to get together. That was a territorial issue, but you know, these are all things you can avert just by changing the name of the place right up front on them. So hiking, a lot of hikers. It's, you'd be shocked to the retired people you see up there early in the mornings during the summer months particularly. Snowshoeing, those people have learned how to get along. We've ran the trails out to, you know, twenty-some plus feet, or twenty-five, or thirty in some cases, and there's plenty of room for the bikers and the snowshoes to get along with both skating and traditional type of skiing on it. And then, of course, the use for wedding and parties or venues for such as that. But I'm going to go down swinging here on this last one, but I think you're building a white elephant if you don't put the kitchen in there on it. And you know, they've talked about food trucks, and I got a chuckle about that when you're out there trying to thaw out your septic systems, and that's no joke, and that's not a fun gesture if you don't get enough snow cover, but that and the water lines on those food trucks and so forth, and what if you have other venues going on in town at the same time? But if, and I'm all for trying to hire, I mean, bring all these teams and stuff in here from Lake Laramie and Colorado and so forth on them, but if you can't feed them, I mean, the only other alternative you've got is to load them all up on it, and then you're creating a real traffic hazard at the road junction there because of the buses. Can't make that corner, they've got to go down on the mailbox, just make a U-turn and head back. So I really think, and there'll be, I'm sure, one last hard push from some of the members of the public to get a commercial kitchen in that thing. And I really think to round it out, to make it a beautiful facility, you need that. And I've harped on that right from the get-go, and some other people have jumped up, but that's going to, that's going to jump up and bite you right off. I mean, we're pipe dream, and if we think we're going to have the people with carry-on mills in there all the time to provide for the functions, I just don't see it happening. And Peter, you hit the nail on the head, that it's only going to continue to grow on it, and if you can't feed people, that's going to be a turnoff for them. You know, if you get them in outside of the cold and they go to the, there's only so many cups to the vending machine that will serve hot chocolate and coffee on them, so, and I just, I'm going to close with this one. How many designers have we hired? You know, the cost of the kitchen was one of the things that was poopot on the original design, and for what we spent to go to a third design here, a team on it, we could have paid for the kitchen on them. So I, I'll leave it at that. Let's just get the damn thing built, and if we can get it built with a bigger kitchen, I'll quit probably coming to the meeting and preaching to the choir. How's that sound?
Oh, that's...
So, so we'll go from there on it. And then I attended a rather interesting Casper Mountain Fire District meeting last night, and they finally woke up on some of the pushback on the zoning rewrite on them. So I, when I got out of it, I forgot my hearing aids like I did again tonight, and I don't know what's, I'm slipping, I think, Paul, but anyhow, I think they're going to be drafting you a letter stating to maybe pull back and hold up, and you know, the pushback, I think, has been a little surprising on a lot of that on them. So my recommendation is to strip out the forest mitigation section of it, make it a standalone document so you can go back to later, and just like you basically have leaned towards going to with the nuisance side of things, isn't that where that ended up at last week, the last meeting or two weeks ago? So at that, I'll sit down and shut up.
Thank you. So let me give you a couple of quick ones. I really liked your idea about changing the name from the Nordic Lodge to, because that's exactly right. It is, that's, that's a really good idea. I don't, maybe come up with a different name, but something that's more inclusive than just one use that's up there. So as far as the white elephant, you've got to remember, it's not the capital cost that bites you, it's the operational cost, and that's the concern going forward, why we've been hesitant about a, the kitchen. It would, it, nothing up there operates on its own. Hogadon Kitchen that they have up there, they've had to scale back operations there because it was way oversized, and that little restaurant has never been able to succeed. So that's been our concern, was going forward, it would just be too expensive. And then finally was, was the other one? Oh, the trails. So yes, we've, the, what's it called, the Wildlife Urban Interface Regulations. We don't think that regulation references should be in the zoning. If, if we're going to approve that, it should be approved just like you would do the international building codes or fire codes, but those codes should not be directly incorporated in zoning. At least that's, I'm speaking for myself, but I believe that's the general consensus of the commissioners right now. And when we meet on the twenty-ninth, I think you'll see that that probably is going to get, if not totally removed, pretty well neutered in there.
Sounds good.
Mr. Commissioner Milne.
So I don't need to make any more comments on the zoning, but Tracy, in the plans for the Trail Center? To be forward known as Tracy's Nest or Roost, maybe?
No, 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 thanks.
But the, all seriousness of the kitchen, while it's not, it's being planned as, as presented today, right? But we are, the plans are to be able to put in the electric and the guts, the internal workings, so that it could be upgraded to a commercial kitchen at a future point if necessary, but at this time, it's just going to be strictly as the catering kitchen.
On them, so that, that's...
So we are looking forward, just not, we're not doing go-forward, we're looking forward.
That's, that's where it came to rest, the last meeting I was at when you guys invited me down as a stakeholder, and I, I'm pleased to hear that, because what you were planning on doing was putting some of the roughouts and so forth in the floor, because there isn't a crawl space under that particular part of the building, is there? So you know, in that, there should be a tentative design that you could grow into, and I think now's the time to do that in case you found, like, maybe, boy, there is a need on it, and I just happen to be one of the proponents of the things there is on it, but I think it'll grow to that before it's over with. So, and Pete, on the parking, somehow we blanked out. Am I still getting through on the mic?
Yes.
On it, the, if you get that slope, there's not much to play with there when you get to looking at the actual location of that thing. You cut down more trees and get that stuff sloping and other things going into that one drainage. I've seen Alcorn to where you couldn't drive across it because of, it drains everything out of Bear Trap on it, and I'm talking about a golly worship rain, not the traditional runoff from the snow mountain on them, but I, I think you guys have tried some other things of using the catchy buses or the school district buses for shuttling from up on the top of Bear Trap by the gravel pile as a carryover parking area. I know that's, usually has quite a bit of ground for parking if they clear it, and Mike does a good job of that in the winter time too as well. And then, of course, you've got the spillover Bear Trap, and the snowmobilers have been good to work with. I think when you guys have had events up there, they kind of just stay away on them. So, but the shuttle, rather than, somewhere we've got to start taking care of that forest up there of preservation. We're not going to have any forest left on it. I'm not using that as a scare tactic, but we've got to be looking out for it somewhere. So thanks for the extra time, Paul.
You bet. Thank you, Tracy. Anyone else? Commissioner-elect Dallas Laird?
Thank you. My name's Dallas Laird, five thirty-six South Center. I went home and had to chase my new Greyhound. You can't catch a Greyhound. Finally, we herded him back in. He's only seven months old. I've never seen anything run like that. Do you guys feel like you're in good shape with the city in terms of that, the land issue on the mountain with the possible trade?
The swap?
Yeah.
Yes, we've, we're in agreement, we're just going through the paperwork.
What do you want to see happen, Paul, there?
Our goal is to have all the lands that the, basically, that the city owns right now, deeded to us, to the county, and with a reverter, very similar to rotary, that the sole use is for public wreck. So basically, it's just a big part, because right now, we, we have, we have structures on their land, we maintain the trails on their land, some of that we have an agreements with, but when you drop over to the biathlon club area, there's, I believe, two hundred acres that we've got trails knocked down through, and we either blade or the biathlon club blades. There's no agreement that says we can do it, there's no, there's no consideration on whose liability it is. So we just want to have, have it done, and then eventually be able to put a master park plan together that looks at how we can put multi-use trails in for year-round use. That's been the big plan.
My intent is to visit with the city manager a little bit about that, and I think that it's possible to get that thing resolved. I know it'd be nice if it was resolved.
Yeah, and then they've got, they've got a lot of, we've got lots of parcels scattered, especially along the river, that would allow the city, in the course of the river restoration, not to have to deal with other entities, and that just for ease of some of the projects that they've got planned for the river restoration. And I think we have a few others that we've probably gotten in bankruptcy or whatever, but they're of no value to us.
Well, hopefully it'll get, because I know that would, that will be a good addition to the county when you get that finished. The other thing I'd like to say is I thought, I really appreciated your compassion for the employees, but I know it's always been there, and I'm glad you're doing it before Christmas because it'll be helpful to them. And so for me, thank you, because it's just one less thing we have to do.
Well, I will tell you, and I will say this on my last day, Daniel Kretcheck has been a, an awesome addition to the Naterona County staff. Prior to her, we really didn't have an HR person, so if we wanted to do this, we had to go outside, and she did this one hundred percent on her own. She's just amazing what she has accomplished in a very, very short time period.
Well, you have, you really do have great employees here. You have a great, I could name all of them, and they're all great in my opinion. I know a lot of them, and so, and they're valuable, and they're valuable, and they're, it's well worth keeping them here. Now, the most important reason I came here was because I would really like you guys to consider, this won't involve you, Paul, do you really have to wear suits to these meetings? Or ties?
It's just a tie.
North, North admitted that, or no, maybe it was Milne admitted that it took him two, three days to get his tie tied.
Well, we wear...
I'm exaggerating.
We all wear jeans.
Yeah. So, so is it a rule? Because you know, I had to wear a tie for, I've worn a tie for...
Usually the meetings only last five minutes.
Time. And you looked so good at those hearings. He had his leather vest on, and you were dressed up like a regular Wyoming guy, and here, here comes the young lawyer with, he looked like a regular Wyoming lawyer and rancher, you know? I told North, I said, "God, you guys look a little bit like undertakers sometimes with these dark suit coats on, so..." But you look good in them. Have a good evening.
All right, thanks. Former Commissioner Terry Wingeter.
I might as well say something too. Terry Wingeter, fourteen twenty-seven Horn Church, Casper. Well, what I wanted to say, first of all, sitting in the work session, I like your idea, Paul and Peter, I think. You mentioned too, the aesthetics of that Nordic Track building or the trail building. It should be more rustic. I certainly agree with that, and I never did see the final concept of your picnic shelters, but I know there's a big difference between the picnic shelter and that building, but they, it should look kind of uniform for future buildings on the mountain, whatever, you know, when the city, when the county starts building additional buildings in the future. And then I wanted to, one, a couple other things. Number one, during the campaign, it was never brought up, but I've heard a lot of people gripe about the road conditions around Pathfinder. The anglers around Pathfinder, several of them came up to me and said, "They've got to do something about the roads around Pathfinder." Now, I haven't been out to Pathfinder in some time now, so I don't know exactly what condition they're in or whatever. And the third thing I wanted to say is, Paul, you've done a lot for this community, and I'm not just, not only the county, but on the city. How many times were you mayor? At least two or three times? Well, I just want to commend you for that and what you've done for this community. And this is Noel, I congratulated the new commissioners coming in, and Rob, if you're listening to me, I had a chance to work with you many years, and you and I got along pretty good, and I want you to know I appreciate the way you treated me all those years, and we had a good time, and I just want you to know that. So, and then there's one other thing, and I'll sit down. Now, this has nothing to do with the county, but I think you should hear this. You need to put a little pressure on YDOT to finish the four-lane highway all the way around Casper. The other day, I was driving along, on the two-lane, you know, before it goes to the four-lane, no, I was driving on the four-lane, going east, and I almost saw one hell of a wreck there by a car pulling in to get in that two-lane. And I know the YDOTs, they're supposed to be getting a lot of infrastructure money, and this is a good time to, you and the city, is put a little pressure on YDOT. I sat through the YDOT meeting when they reported to you, and there was nothing said about finishing the four-lane all around Casper. So that's basically all I had to say. I just felt like I had to say something, so thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? There being no one else? Commissioners' comments? Oh, Commissioner Hendry.
I just appreciate that. Appreciated working with him over the years. But the reason we've always dressed up, we've always worn a tie, and it's for, it's for the general public, and it's, it's our way of saying that this office is important, and as far as I'm concerned, we need to dress up in a tie and a suit coat. And anyway, I hope it continues, and Mr. Chairman, I'd like you to ask Dallas if his head was cold next time he comes in. Thank you.
Do you have anything else for the good of the order, Rob? Ms. Commissioner Hendry?
I'm down here at the Governor's Forum. They had a wellness study, or wellness forum today, and had lots of great speakers and talked about, you know, suicide prevention and prevention of all kinds of wellness issues that are affecting the county. So it was a good seminar. If anybody gets a chance, look at it on the web, the Business Alliance's website. The Governor's Forum is on tomorrow and the next day, and it's quite a lineup. There'll be some really good presentations, so that was it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you. Commissioner North?
I don't have anything for tonight.
Okay. Commissioner Milne?
I didn't really have anything until Commissioner-elect Dallas Laird came in. I do agree with Rob. It's not that the clothes make the man, it's a respect of the office and in respect to the public. I, I would like to also, I hope to see this board to continue even past me or whatever, continue to address respectfully for these meetings.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you to members of the public that spoke tonight. Yeah, the first item I'd mention is directed to Commissioner-elect Laird, who left after making his comments, and I would tell him and the public that we are public servants. This was a courtroom, and Mr. Laird, as an attorney, had to wear a tie and a sport coat at least every time he walked in here for all those years. You know, I, this is no courtroom anymore, but it's the public's room. I think for decorum, and I think for respect, that we owe it to the community to look like professionals. We hold ourselves out as such, and we need to act like that. I think it's important for the office. I would thank the public for voting for the one cent. That makes a heck of a difference, and you would not believe how reliant this county is and how the communities, the municipalities and towns are on the one cent. You're doing yourself a favor every time you vote for it. The same sentiment with respect to constitutional amendment A. We are blessed to have substantial funds from the sale of the hospital, and we will be able to more appropriately invest those funds, or at least some of those funds, just like the state of Wyoming has, and that's going to make a meaningful difference every year in terms of interest that we get from those investments. I think that Tracy's point about this not being a Nordic Center is right on, and I think that the Mountain Trail Center sounds nice to me. I would mention that here in the next few days, it's my understanding that the most current design and layout, elevations and site plan are going to be on the county's website, and I would encourage the county to look at the website and get in touch with your commissioners or Mr. Michael Brown for any comments, questions, or concerns you have. I would also say that please, please remember, if you're concerned about zoning in the county, whether you live in the county or you're concerned about zoning because you're a citizen of the county, to check out the current draft, which is also on the county's website. Today, we made, I think, some great progress for the employees of the county in terms of compensation, and I'm pleased to have been a part of that, and I think that, you know, you do what you can for the people that make the place run, and I've said this before, they're the most important asset of the county government, and they keep the wheels on the bus, and so we appreciate them. I'm glad to have a meaningful decision in their favor. I would mention my concerns from what I'm hearing about what's going on in the, in our local health care. I think that there are some concerns about the adequacy of our health care, and I think that it's going to be a continuing conversation and needs to be part of our conversation so that we make sure that we have enough physicians and enough nurses to provide a good level of care, the care that we deserve here in the county. We've had property tax appeals for the last couple of days, and I am glad that we've had, I think, some results that have allowed the taxpayers to have more communications with the assessor's office, and I've been real pleased with the assessor's office and their willingness to talk to some of these people when new evidence comes up and new information comes out. But property tax isn't going to be solved by appealing your property taxes under our current structure, and every citizen ought to reach out to their legislators, and I would say that if you live in a district where there's a newly-elected senator or a newly-elected representative, make sure and get in touch with them and help them understand the problem, because I don't think that they have maybe, in general, enough of a good understanding of the problems and some of the solutions that are out there, and some of the implications and consequences of some of the proposed bills. Those need to be well-considered and thought out, and so get in touch with your legislator, legislators. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Are you done?
I could probably come up with more, but no, I'm done.
All right, thank you. A couple of things real quick. Outstanding job again on an election that sounded like it had some initial challenges, so our county clerk, Tracy Good, did an outstanding job getting everyone through the polls, so. And in closing, congratulations to the Kelly Walsh girls for winning state foray volleyball.
Congratulations to the Kelly Walsh girls.
And with that, we're adjourned.